This is Jason Anderson, Chairman of the Killenlye Town Council. It is currently 7:00 PM on Tuesday, January 7th, and we are calling this special town council meeting to order. For roll call purposes, all council members are in attendance. We'll now move on to item three on the agenda, interviews of board and commission applicants. First up is 3A. Mr. Michael Hugo is requesting a change from alternate member to regular member on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Mr. Hugo, if you could. Good evening. And just a little bit of information, why you want to change from alternate to regular member?
I guess we had one member, a regular member resign. He hasn't been on most of last year, so most of the time I've been, or all the times I've been, a regular member, so says, well, let's stop, you know, the changes and just get the board back to the five members that it should be.
And the time you've served so far, how do you feel things are going with planning and zoning?
You know, you've got some controversy and such going on, but I thought it's going pretty well. We, you know, it's a good committee, or a good board, talks it out, and, you know, they allow us to view our points, and then, you know, if they, some corrections, they'll let you know, so.
Okay, thank you. I will open up to council members' questions, comments.
So, Jason, it's this procedural, I'm not sure how to do it. So, I've got two pages of questions. Some of the stuff is like a little explanation, a little question, a little explanation, a little question. People like Mike will already know, the new people will not. What I like to do is read through it once, and then I don't have to read the whole thing again, and then read the, just the little questions, so that the new people kind of have an understanding of what the question means.
Sure.
Is that okay?
Yes, absolutely.
All right, so this is the only time I'll be reading the whole thing, everybody, and I apologize for how long. Mike, you're already on, thank you for your service. There are different zone districts for residential districts. The basic density zones are medium density, low density, and rural development. In a rural zone, you are allowed to put one house per every 80,000 square feet, basically one house per a little less than two acres. There are also different uses assigned to the zones, like planned residential developments, multifamily units, mixed use. Recently, it was highlighted that our local ordinances for planned residential development are in conflict with this one house per 80,000 square feet rural development wording. The conflicting language in the ordinance says that there can be four houses per acre in a rural development zone per special permit. Have you read the Plan of Conservation and Development?
Yes.
So, for the other people, the newer people, I'm going to read what it is, just abbreviate for when they're up, I won't have to read this again. This is a, "The Plan of Conservation and Development is a 10-year-long plan that the town staff has developed with town citizens' input that has to be approved by the state of Connecticut. In it, the different zones and types of housing developments are mapped out for the 10-year future. The new proposed ordinance language is also in conflict with the Plan of Conservation and Development. The Plan of Conservation and Development does not include the use of planned residential development, larger housing developments, in rural developed areas. It mentions specifically only medium and low-density areas shall have these housing developments. The P&amp;Z is in the process of amending our town ordinances. How do you feel about four houses per acre in rural development zone?"
I've been going back and forth on that since we've been discussing it on the different, several meetings we've been going on. I was, had written down three, you know, they bring up some points on four, and I'm still debating it should be three or four. I'm, you know, I still got to do research on it, you know. It's not an easy question to answer, it's tough.
Sure, thank you, Mike. So, the next question is how you vote, and you're just not sure yet?
Right, as of right now, yeah.
Sure. So, the other issue that's going on for the new people is satellite sewers. The proposed satellite sewer systems, there's new ordinances that they're trying to propose, are independently owned oversized septic systems, or smaller independent sewer treatment facilities, such as package plants, for large housing developments. They either eventually may still discharge to a public sewer, or sometimes directly to ground injection. I'm not sure about the surface water, I'm positive of ground injection, with approval coming from the Health Department as the overseeing authority, and there I just reference what they are. Satellite community sewers and water systems are currently prohibited from the Planned Residential Housing Development ordinance. The Plan of Conservation contains language which discourages the use of satellite sewers. This is referenced later on where it is in the POCD. Number one, it mentions maintain rural and limited development areas that do not have access to public utilities such as sewer and water. Then again, it mentions later on, maintain the current sewer avoidance areas, discourage the extension of public water into those areas, and keep them as areas not designated for more intensive development. In other words, the current language in the POCD and the Killenlye ordinances allow for the rate of increase for dense housing developments to be more naturally gradual, naturally gradual, and limited by the time and cost that it takes to expand the public sewer system. If the town ordinance were to allow four houses per acre in a rural development zone that no longer has to be tied into our public sewer system, our concern is, for example, that there is nothing to stop someone from purchasing 10 acres in the woods and putting up 40 houses, using their own private packaged sewer plant, and this would be, could be in rural, rural development, the way it's proposed right now. P&amp;Z is in the process of amending our ordinances. Do you have any idea if you're going to vote yes or no, Mike, on the satellite sewers?
Not yet. I gotta read more on that, plus, I want to know what the Health Department, if, what their opinion on this subject is, you know. I don't know if anybody could buy 40 acres and put up a sewage plant, because I'm wondering, I'm hearing it's very expensive, and I don't know if you really want, people will put in the money for that.
So, just so you know, I was on the phone today with a coworker's friend that works for Weston and Sampson, and he is doing that with ground injection in Massachusetts. He said he's doing it all over the place, housing developments with PRD and satellite sewers. So, it's definitely possible, and once you go into that, four houses on an acre, it can happen anywhere in rural.
Can I interject? In the development in Brooklyn, they're doing satellite sewers because of the moratorium?
Which one?
The one right by the river.
The one where the mill used to be, that burnt down? I thought that was on hold for now.
That is on hold. Yeah, that's on hold.
Or it got canceled, so really, they're not doing it.
They're doing it.
I think they're finding out that it's a lot more money than, you know, who's paying for all this?
Oh, yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna be money, but it is being done.
Right, so what are we doing to the housing? Are we, are they going to put it on the houses, so they're so expensive that nobody can afford them, and they're just going to sit there for nothing? It just doesn't make sense. It would be, you know, questions you have to ask the developer if he comes in.
Thank you, Mike. So, the last question I have, Uller and I and other citizens collected approximately 140 signatures on an informational petition which read, "We, the undersigned, all duly qualified voters, property owners, and/or residents in the town of Killenlye, County of Wyndham, and State of Connecticut respectfully request, we would like to keep the town of Killenlye rural. We do not want increases in density or lot size coverage, nor do we want decreases in setbacks in our ordinances, particularly in zones that are designated as rural. Past precedents and the current Planning and Conservation Development Plan used the public wastewater system as a limiting control factor in regards to the designation of zones. We ask that you continue to honor this practice and carry out the plan that the citizens had a voice in creating. We ask that you listen to us now and honor the people's wishes to maintain the rural characteristic of Killenlye, and in all matters of ordinance changes, err on the side of decreases in density, lot coverage, sizes, and setbacks. If appointed, do you agree to listen to the citizens of Killenlye and follow their lead with regards to their wishes for the amount of development and direction of town development when making your planning and zoning decisions?"
First of all, always, I always listen to whoever gets up there and speaks. I'll take notes, and that's a must, you know, you've got to listen to the people. Now, you're saying here, 140 people signed those petition, out of how many voters in the town of Killenlye? 10,000?
Eighteen thousand.
Eighteen thousand, what's the percentage?
So, just so you know, the Planning and Conservation of Development was formed with a petition with 150 people. Eighty people came to a meeting, and then they hand out surveys, 150 people, so it's very similar to what the entire 10-year plan was, just so you know. I get it, I said the same thing you did about the POCD.
Just one point of clarification, we don't have 18,000 voters, that's our population.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, thank you, I'm sorry.
We have about 10,000, a little over 10,000 in our population.
So, even 10,000, are we talking 1% of the voters are saying, you know, how much, you know, you've got to listen to the voters, and you also got to listen to the people, because I've been hearing it outside of it, you know, just they didn't come up to the meeting and stuff, for it instead of against it, you know, they, you know, the people that show up usually are against it, come on, you know, we all know that. You know, you've got to talk to people outside and say, what do you think? You know, you've got to get other opinions, you know, there's not, you know, just one way, you know, you've got to be open-minded and look at both sides of the street, you know, everybody has a viewpoint, and you've got to listen to it.
Thank you, Mike.
Ms. Wakefield, microphone.
Sorry about that, I forgot, got to turn on my green. So, also, you have regulations, too. There are town regulations, there are state regulations, and federal regulations, and, you know, just because somebody wants to come in and do something, if it doesn't meet the regs...
Exactly, you've got, that's, you know, what's nice is you, I got the time, because I'm retired, so I hate to rub it in, but I, you know.
I'll be there one day.
So, I, you know, when we get the package, I can sit down and say, okay, I can go on to the computer and say, let's investigate this, you know. If it's something that's been continuous, you can, okay, now let's investigate what was brought up, but let's see what the next section's going to be like, you know, let's investigate it, gives me something to do during the day.
And having sat on the Board of Health, on the Direct, Board of Directors for the Board of Health, I can, the, getting, getting septic systems approved is not an easy thing. I mean, if the soils, you know, you've got to have your right drainage.
Yeah, wouldn't they be, they'll be first, so, you know.
Oh, yeah, they, you can't get past, if you can't get them to approve you, that's it.
Then no sense coming to us.
They might try coming to you first, but then, you know.
I'm sure, you know, the board will say, no, you've got to get that, and especially with the moratorium now, you know, I want to make sure they got it all before we say it.
Yeah.
You know, go through the right channels before it comes to us.
I do, I do appreciate the fact that you're willing to listen to both sides, because everybody's got a point.
Yeah, exactly.
Nobody's got all the answers.
Nope.
And sometimes, you know, something might just click for somebody that they might have something that no, the other person didn't think about, so. I appreciate your open-mindedness.
Yeah, when you get broad, you know, tunnel vision, and just look at one side, then you get yourself in trouble, then you're not really doing it for all the people in town of Killenlye, you're doing it for a selected few, a selected number, not a few, but...
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
Mr. Brandowski.
So, you, you applied as an alternate, but most of the time, you've been moved up to a regular member. I think almost every meeting, of those that I've attended, you've always been, it's, it's like, so, people look at alternate positions and say, oh, well, why do I want to go for an alternate position, and, but, you're the, I guess you're the ruler over there now, that you're alternate, but because of people not coming, you know, nope, we can't make all our meetings all the time.
No.
But we don't have alternates. See, you guys, that's nice in, in P&amp;Z and some of our boards and commissions.
I'm, I see that we got more coming up after me, which is, you know, it's a good thing.
That's a nice thing to have, and so, I appreciate you, and I'm glad you're coming forward the next step, so this is good.
Ms. Barclay.
So, how do you feel about developers making suggested changes to the planning and zoning regulations, and the Planning and Zoning Commission adopting these changes? Because many of these adopted changes were for the benefit of the developers.
I don't like, don't like, if they get a good point, and they, and they present it correctly, I'll listen, and if it's, if it's valid, yeah, okay, let's, let's do it. But if it's just to benefit developer now, we're not here to develop, you know, we're here for the citizens around here, we're not here to satisfy developer or something, you know, that wants to come, you want to come into town of Killenlye, fine, you know, prove that you do, make sure all your Ts are crossed, and your Is are dotted, and make sure it's, it's correct. If you want to make a suggestion, tell us why we should change our regulations to meet what your requirement, what you're saying. Tell us why it's wrong presently, and why it'd be beneficial to change it, not just for yourself, but for everybody, you know. You might change the regulation to satisfy the one developer, but the next person or the next few people that come in, it won't satisfy them. It might not, you know, it might affect somebody else from coming in, so you've got to be careful that way. It's, that's a tricky road to ride on, to say, yeah, I want to change it for this reason. Give me a good reason, give me an, you know, a real good reason why I should change it.
Okay. How do you feel about the public participation at planning and zoning workshops, where regulations are modified and changed? So, there was public participation up until about August, and after that, the public was not allowed to participate. There have been comments that the public does not come to planning and zoning workshops and planning and zoning meetings, and then when there are developments or industry going, planned for, planned for the community, that's when the people come out and start complaining. So, how do you feel about their participation? Because I've heard comments that they're not allowed to participate at the workshops, and they're being stifled.
I didn't, I didn't hear that, I don't remember that part, you know.
So, you don't notice that we haven't been able to participate at the workshops?
No, you know, I thought he opens it, they opened it up, no?
No, it's been closed to citizens.
It should be opened up, and you get, plus, it's coming up to, you know, an open meeting anyway, you have to put it on the floor anyway before, you know, when, when we finalize what our opinions of the regulation is, it has to be presented to the public for an open, for a meeting anyway, so.
Don't you think there should be public comment prior to
Yeah.
...the regulation going to the attorney and being approved by the attorney, because that's basically the last step, and before it goes to the public?
Yeah, they should, you know, I wouldn't mind it, you know. Personally, I wouldn't mind it. If the four other, if I'm sitting on the board and the four others say no, then I'll give my reasons, and here's my opinions, and I, you know, here's my vote. If it goes against me, it goes against me.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Hello, Mr. Hugo, how are you?
Good.
Thank you for taking a very common sense approach, for following regulations and being very direct, we appreciate it, because I have gotten some negative feedback as far as how you guys have been treated over the past year or so, with public comment, with heckling from the audience, with people not understanding what the laws are, and combating you guys, starting petitions, so on and so forth. So, thank you for wanting to be a
Thank you.
...permanent member and continue getting beat up unjustly.
I must have liked you for some reason.
So, so my question to you, yeah, you're used to it. So, my question to you is, how much of Killenlye is actually rural?
The percentage?
Yeah.
Off the top of my head, I'm not sure. I know, as far as the rural development, the two years, or approximately two years I've been on it, we had one application in two years, so.
Right.
To say the whole town of Killenlye's going to be, you know, a city, or houses all over the place, we haven't seen it yet.
Right.
They're not.
Okay, so you guys are held to the standard of, so town ordinance, state regulation, towns, federal.
Right.
And you do everything by the book. If there is a question, you go to the attorneys.
Correct.
So, it's safe to say that our Planning and Zoning Commission is following the rules?
Sure hope so.
And sometimes when people get up to come and comment, they may not know exactly what those regulations are, and it's your job to explain them and, you know, follow the guidelines.
The best we can, you know, and then we'd say if we, I'm, honestly, if I don't know, I would have no hesitation to say, I don't know.
Right, and to find, take it a step further and find out
Exactly.
...what you're supposed to be doing, so, thank you for that, and I, the only other thing, I'm trying to think, I lost my train of thought, happens sometimes, getting old, but, um...
Wait.
How do you think your Planning and Zoning Commission works as a body?
Very good, I'm very surprised, you know.
And you support each other and work well together.
Oh, yeah, you know, you know, if you have a question, that no hesitation, they'll answer it, and if you, if you make a statement that is wrong, they'll tell you, so you know next time you don't make this statement, but, yeah.
But you have a pretty cohesive group.
Yeah, and, and they're very calm
Yes.
...people there on the board, so, you know, you take their hint, and you just stay calm, and, okay, you know, you want to scream at me? So be it, scream at me, I don't care.
That's, that's really disrespectful and shouldn't be accepted, but I understand some people, that's how they do it.
I, I work that electric boat, you want to hear screaming at, you know.
Well, thank you for your professionalism and all the work you do for the town, we truly appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Hugo, just a quick question, you mentioned when a developer comes in and they want changes to regulation, you know, you'll weigh the pro and con, and, you know, kind of look at it from both sides, how, how often would you say that that, that happens?
There was one, well, I heard, I've heard of one, but I, since I've been on the board, it was only one that came in and says, hey, it would benefit, benefit to the town to this zone, this ordinance be changed, and here's the change that we proposed, and then we give them the reason why, okay, yeah, it might be good, but here's the reason why it might not be good, you know.
Okay, I was just curious, just curious, thank you, sir.
So far, one.
I just, in regards to that one, was that the one that where there was a developer there talking about changing density?
No, that was the business park.
Okay, all right, so as far as the business park, I know the, one of the big discussions was setbacks, and my understanding was, between town staff and planning and zoning, they had reached out to the abutters on that, as far as changing the setback, and there was a certain number that the abutters agreed to reduce the setback to, and then, when it came before planning and zoning, they actually reduced that setback even further without discussing it with the abutters. The, I believe the statement was, there was discussion between town staff and a town attorney if they could reduce it even further, and the attorney said they could, so then planning and zoning reduced it even further than what they had reached an agreement with the abutters. Now, I don't know, I don't know if you were a voting member at that meeting or not.
Go ahead. That's a good question. I, I think I was, but I can't remember for sure.
In a situation like that, if you were put in a similar situation, some, someone else comes forward looking to make zone change or setback change on a piece of property, and the staff and the commission, the Planning and Zoning Commission, reached a consensus with the abutters, and the abutters were agreeable on a certain amount, would you vote for reducing it even further than that amount during a meeting without reaching out to the abutters, or would you want to reach out to the abutters to get their opinion?
Of course, reach out to the abutter. That's the, you know, that's who you're right next, that's who's involved, that's the person that's going to be involved with it, you know. If they says, okay, you know, if they come back and say, yeah, we can live with that, okay, we're fine, if not, then let's find out why, you know, why the attorney says, you know, you can cut it down, or, or leave it as is, you live with what we, you know, what it is.
Okay, thank you. That was the last question I had, any other questions from council?
Yeah, I'll just say one more thing, Mike, just so you know, the petition was really informational, we made it so we could go real, but we really didn't want to do that, we wanted it to be information, and part of why I did that is because every meeting we came and tried to tell you what we were saying, and you said, where are your people? So, we said, let's go knock on So we said, let's go knock on doors and see what people think. And in the first weekend, I want to say we, we pulled 60 signatures easily with one woman saying no. And then we said, okay, tell me about it and we, we were open. So I get what you're saying. I know there are people on the other side. In my experience, it's overwhelming that people don't want four houses on an acre in rural, but I respect that you hear differently. I just wanted you to know the evolution of that process.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anything further for us?
Nope. I mean, it's, it's well-run board and, you know, I'm pleased that, I'm really pleased that I did sign up, you know, and I was accepted by, you know, the town council to be on that board. Learned a lot.
Yeah. On behalf of the council, I do want to say thank you for the time that you've served and we will be voting on the change from alternate to regular member on next Tuesday.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is item 3B. Timothy Burnett is seeking appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission. As a regular and alternate member, his term would run from January 1st, 2020.
I don't think he's here. Is Tim here?
Yeah.
No, I don't think so.
Okay. All right, we will skip over 3B and move on to 3C, Norm Farren. Norm Farren is interested in being appointed as a regular or alternate member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. His term would run from January 1st, 2025 to December 31st, 2027. Planning and Zoning Commission currently has one regular member vacancy and two alternate member vacancies. Welcome, Mr. Farren.
Thank you.
Could you tell us a little bit about your interest in serving on planning and zoning?
I think I'd be interested in having some input into how the zoning regulations are put into effect. And I've been concerned with a little bit, what I, what I feel is inconsistency in the application of some of this and some of the changes that I don't agree with.
Thank you. And I will open up for questions. I will let Ms. Murphy start first.
Sure, so I'm not going to read that whole thing again. I gave it to you guys if you need it, read it for the public. Have you gotten to read the plan of conservation and development?
No, I have not.
So that's, that's online, that's a good thing to read.
Okay.
How do you feel about four houses per acre in a rural development zone?
I think the rural development zone should be kept just that rural and four houses per acre in my mind is not a rural development.
So how would you vote, yes or no?
I would vote no on that.
Thank you. On the sanitary sewer issue, would you vote yes or no to remove satellite sewer, the satellite sewer prohibition in the use of planned residential housing developments for larger housing developments, especially in rural development zones?
I don't like the idea of that. I would vote against it.
Thank you. If appointed, will you agree to always listen to the citizens of Killenly and follow their lead with regards to their wishes for the amount of development and direction of town development when making your planning and zoning decisions?
Absolutely. I think that the will of the majority of the town for something like planning and zoning is definitely a primary factor in how things should be regulated.
Thank you, Norm.
Thank you. Any further questions? Ms. Barclay.
So the town council is elected by the residents of the town to fulfill the residents' wants and needs and the town council appoints the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. So the Planning and Zoning Commission is supposed to base their decisions on the vision of the residents and you will follow what the majority of the residents want in regards to planning and zoning ordinances and changes to their regulations?
Yes, pretty much. You know, if it, if it makes sense legally, yes.
Okay. And same question that I asked, Mike, how do you feel about developers making suggested changes to planning and zoning regulations and the Planning and Zoning Commission adopting these changes? Because, because many of the adopted changes are for the benefit of the developer. And I'll go into the meeting that Jason was referring to. It was in regards to Business Park on Westcott Road where the previous setback was 750 feet and the decision was made that there would be no Business Park be able to be built there because of the large setback. And they had met with the neighbors and the neighbors agreed to 150 feet. The attorney, I believe it was the attorney for the landowners was there and said that other towns, he did research, other towns had 50 feet for the setback, so Killenly also should have a 50-foot setback. So Anne Marie got up and called the attorney and the attorney said that the Planning and Zoning Commission can reduce the setback to 50 feet without contacting the abutters, even though they agreed to 150 feet. So how do you feel about that decision? Because only one of the Planning and Zoning Commissioners voted no.
In my opinion, that was a terrible decision, not to go back to the abutters and ask them how they felt about it.
Okay. And the, the next question is about how do you feel about public participation at planning and zoning workshops where regulations are modified and changed? Again, I'll say that we were told that after the regulations are changed, it goes to the attorney for final wording, then there's a public hearing where the public can participate and make their, make comments, but that may not sway the commissioners. They, they'll listen, but that doesn't mean that they're going to listen to the public. So what do you feel about that?
Well, I think there should definitely be public input. Now, you know, I don't think the commission members should be nailed down and have to vote based on the people that come to their meeting at that time. I think you have to, you know, use your own judgment and, and, and think how the majority of the town would want the decision to be made based on, you know, what you've seen, what you've heard in, in the past at all meetings. But I think public input in these type of meetings is, is a good thing.
Thank you.
Any further questions, comments? One thing I will bring up, discussion I just had with the town manager. We need to be cognizant of when interviewing commission members who are interviewing for a commission and asking, and we're asking them questions in regards to existing applications that depending on the way it's answered, it could be perceived as prejudice regarding existing applications or even potentially other applications down the road. So just to make everyone aware of that. Me personally, I see no issue asking someone's opinion in a situation like the public participation. That, that's an open-ended comment. I, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't be able to ask that. Also, asking, like when I asked Mr. Hugo and as Ula brought up as well, when you have an application and there's an agreed change to a setback, how would you feel about changing that again after you've already had agreement with the abutters without going back to the abutters?
I would just advise against asking your potential candidates on their direct response for a vote answer because that is, would be potential prejudicial around if that application, and if they are seated and that is an application before them, they potentially would not be able to participate in that vote or that conversation due to jeopardizing their position without having all facts in front of them. So you really shouldn't, I'd advise that you don't ask your applicants directly how they would vote on a specific matter.
So let me ask Mary because my questions are about our town ordinances, not applications.
Right, but the, you're asking a potential candidate, a potential board member, how they would vote as a board member on an app, because it would be an application before them.
No, this is on the creation of our town ordinances.
But that's the app, that goes before them as an application.
Okay.
That's how they vote, that's how they change them, is based on an application.
Sure.
And so that would jeopardize their ability to potentially participate and/or vote on that application if they are declaring their vote stance now. They, they are deemed then prejudicial. And so
Interesting, okay, sure.
they are supposed to go into an application process with an open mind and weighing all sides and all benefits and all, you know, all detriments. So it's, I just putting that out there.
No, it's easy enough to do. It's, it's odd that it's like an application, but I, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, it's considered an application.
Somebody can say, I feel this way now and then feel a different way later.
But you're asking them how they're voting, not how they feel. Which is a difference.
Right, and I didn't get that it was an application because there is no application, it's our ordinance, but I get what you're saying.
Yeah.
Processurally it is, so, okay.
So I would just, I would advise against asking directly how they plan to
Yes or no, yeah, yeah.
vote on an application.
Sure, sure.
Any more questions?
Yeah, I have to comment on, I think it's, I think we need to know what they're feeling about different, like the density issue. If we don't ask them how they feel about the density issue, how would we know how they feel?
Asking their opinion is fine. Asking what their hard vote would be, that's where
So you're saying you can't say, okay, Norm, how would you vote?
Correct. You could ask what their opinion is.
Yep.
But not necessarily what their, what their vote would be.
To follow up on that, as town councillors, based on these targeted questions, the perception, I think, could be too. We're basing our votes, some of us, on what the answers to these questions are specifically. When there are seven specific duties for planning and zoning, do you know all of those?
We're allowed to vote the way we want to vote based on how we feel, how they answer these questions, so that I exactly am going to vote on these specific questions, Patty.
And I understand that, but you're, but what it looks like and what it sounds like is you're only voting for people that agree with you.
I completely am going to vote based on how people answer these questions.
Isn't, aren't your questions based on, based on your experience going out and getting the, getting the signatures? So it's basically, you're not, it's not all you, it's a conglomerate of the town. What should we represent?
Correct. If the town was telling me completely the opposite, then I would be voting the opposite way.
Right, because we represent the town.
Well, if I saw, if I saw this targeted approach with every commission, it wouldn't be an issue, but it seems planning and zoning is being targeted.
Absolutely, I am targeting planning and zoning because it's a very important commission. We're having issues, I'm hearing complaints from the town. I completely am going to vote on the answer to these questions based on what I've heard. That is my job.
Question for you, Norm. So if you, if you disagree with the, with the, with something that comes across your board and the townspeople, if you disagree with the townspeople, how, how would you base your decision?
Well
In other words, if something comes up that, you know, say the townspeople wants increased density in a, in a, in a one acre or two acre, three acre plot, if they, if their townspeople are for that and you're not for that, how would you, being the town is our constituents, how would you?
How would you gauge that, though? Unless you had a vote, a town-wide vote, how would you gauge that? Would you gauge that by people coming to the meeting and speaking for it or?
Well, I think people coming to the meeting is, is pretty much going to be biased like someone else had brought up, but I believe, I believe that if somebody had brought you, as Michelle did, brought you a petition, how would you feel about that? Would that, would that sway you either way? Hey, the townspeople want to go this way?
It, it would sway me, but in my personal opinion, I feel like a rural zone should be a rural zone. If you, if you don't want it to be a rural zone, then change it. You know, I, I think you would start there, just like, you know, I heard some comments earlier and it almost seemed like you were relying on economics to, to gauge development. I think, I, I don't think that's right. I think that the regulations should control the development all the time. You can't say, well, let's just go ahead and do this, we'll roll the dice and, you know, I don't think it's going to be economically viable, so we don't have to worry about it. I, I don't think that's the way that you do planning and zoning.
Right, it can't be tax-based. Basically, what you're doing is you're increasing density for higher taxes, for more, more revenue, we should say.
Yes.
Thank you.
Maybe my question would be if an individual comes forward, we have a set of rules, whatever the planning, zoning rules are, and you have one individual wanting to change the rules, but these rules have been thought out and in place for a long time, there should be a lot of discretion with the existing rules, that they were here for a while, that the person petitioning to change it should have overwhelming evidence and a lot of evidence to make a change. You know, for someone to just come forward, I want to change this for a one entity, I, I think myself, I think we've got to keep the rules in place because they've been there for a while and they better justify it with, with a reams of evidence that where, that the rule in place is wrong. I don't know how you feel about that, that's a
I definitely agree with that.
Any other questions, comments?
I, I just have a comment that I have questions written out because I am liaison to the Planning and Zoning Commission, so that's what I'm familiar with.
Thank you.
I am assistant liaison.
Alternate liaison. All right, I do want to thank you for coming forward and looking to volunteer your time and serve the community and we'll be voting on your appointment next week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next we'll move on to item 3D, Verg Lorentz is seeking reappointment to the Planning and Zoning, oh, wait, no, I'm on the wrong one. I'm on the original, not the amended. Okay, on the amended, it's 3D is Lorraine Lagarde is seeking appointment to Planning and Zoning Commission. She's looking to be appointed as a regular or alternate member and her term would run from January 1st, 2025 to December 31st, 2027.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I've always believed in volunteering in order to go back to the town and I feel I need to get better involved. I feel that I'm a person that will listen to everybody. I'm not prejudiced to anything and I would do what was best for the town or best for the person depending on the issue. I would follow the town rules and, and use that, but I'm listening to all of this and I've read through it and some of it I can't speak on only because I just saw it and I, I don't want to give an opinion on something I haven't studied. There was one thing I did think of and I don't know, I wouldn't vote one way or another, but I think four houses on an acre is a little, a little, a little too much. But I'd also have to see all the reasons why and I may vote differently if, if I did. One of the reasons I'm back too is because we moved here in 1974 and there was no planning and zoning. And my husband, Jack Lagarde, got on, actually formed the planning and zoning. And I feel being asked to come on here is kind of like a circle. And And um, I think he was well respected. And so that's me.
Okay.
Questions?
Uh, I think you answered the first one about how do you feel about four houses per acre? And just to clarify, that's specifically in a rural development, like it's not in low density or medium density, the other zones. It's in rural. Rural development is normally zoned one house per eighty thousand square feet, which is almost two acres. So one house almost on two whole acres, a little bit shy.
Well, I think I would like to stay with rural. Whether it be the four houses that are there, if the people living there wanted maybe another house or something, but no, I would not. I would keep it as rural as possible.
Okay, thank you. Um, did you understand that any of the satellite sewers?
I do not, and so I'm not even going to speak on that.
Okay. It's it is very complicated. If appointed, will you agree to always listen to the citizens of Killingley and follow their lead with regards to their wishes for the amount of development and the direction of town development when making your planning and zoning decisions?
I would always listen to the people as long as it wasn't going against the the rules of the zoning. I would put the person first. I'd listen on both sides, though.
Thank you. Uh, I believe Mr. Grandowski, you got a question?
Well, as I was speaking with Norm, if we have a set of rules and for an individual and one entity to come by and want to change it. But the rules apply to a lot of people. And for one entity that's over here in town and he's looking at this particular area to change the rules, but when you change that rule, you change the rule for the whole rest of the town. So there's a lot to look at.
Okay, I think that's a special interest, and I would not look at that.
Then I appreciate you coming forward again. I know in the past you were on the building commission when we were building the school and all of that.
I was. Can I tell them a little about that?
Sure, you know.
I was the only woman on the building commission. And yes, and I sometimes I had to stand up. So they would speak to me because otherwise they'd be looking down. And um, one time we had to go to the top of the roof of the school. And the fellows I was with, I I liked all of them. They were kind. I think we had a good commission. And so they said, you don't have to go up on the roof. And I said, I'm here, I'm here, and I'm going up on the roof. Actually, the fellows kind of helped me a little, but I made it, didn't I? Yeah, and that was a wonderful commission. It really was, yeah.
It's a good view up on top of the roof.
Oh, it's a wonderful view, as long as you don't look down too much.
So I I have the same question for you. How how do you feel about developers making suggested changes to planning and zoning regulations and the Planning and Zoning Commission adopting these changes? So one example that Ed referred to, that if it was one developer wanting to make changes, that he wouldn't go by it. Well, um, that's exactly how in the planned residential development they have. They increase that there is even a higher density for um, uh, nursing homes and assisted living.
That's how four houses on an acre got into our.
And that's how four houses on an acre got into rural development and also includes nursing homes and elderly how housing because the owner of um, Westview wanted to build um, the assisted the assisted in the um, the elderly apartments and because it's near his property. So that's actually how that whole whole thing about four houses per acre got added into the rural development. It was for the benefit of one developer. So how do you feel about developers coming forward and making such changes?
I think of the people first. If a developer came and he really had a good good um, position, then I think it would have to go before the people and before the rules and then, but I would go lean towards the people.
Okay. And how do you feel about public participation at planning and zoning workshops where the regulations are modified or changed?
I didn't hear what you said.
How do you feel about public participation at planning and zoning workshop workshops where the
Oh.
regulations are modified and changed? So the regulations that the town has are made up by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So they should be following the own their own rules that they set.
I think if there's anything in the town that concerns people, it should never be close to them.
Thank you.
I will just ask one question. It was one I had brought up before. If you had a situation where a property owner, developer was looking to, let's say, decrease setbacks on a certain parcel or certain type of parcels, and let's say it was a specific application and they had reached out to the abutters, the abutters, the town staff and planning and zoning came to a consensus over an agreed reduction to a certain amount. Then when it came to the meeting, if town staff and the developer wanted to reduce it further, would you want to vote on it then or would you want to reach back out to the abutters to get their opinion before you would have voted?
I might reach back out, but I would then I would feel more if the people there said a foot and a half or whatever, and he wants to go further. I would lean towards them, but I might want some more information.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
So so you you did mention, you know, you you did sit on on the um, the building committee committee there. But you've done a lot over the years for Killingley, haven't you? Other than being, yes, other than being Jack's wife and making sure he got worried.
I believe part of life is giving back.
Yep.
Especially if it's where you're living.
So I I know you're very active with a lot of stuff at REC. I know I know I know you've done a lot there, too, but.
I'm involved a little bit with the Interfaith Council. Um, I I was volunteering in the food pantry. Um, I'm involved with St. James, but the involvement is not a lot. The only time I know I used to volunteer at the food pantry every week. Now I just do it at Thanksgiving. The um, Interfaith Council is one day a month. And we did just put on a um, the Federation Church put on an acapella concert and all of that money went to people that needed heat. And so we did act a little more on that because it was something we were doing. Mostly, it's one meeting a month, and then every Wednesday they have food distribution. I am not on it all the time. I had just told her, if you get stuck, because she said, I said, how are you? She said, well, sometimes we have too many, sometimes we don't have enough. So I said, if you do need someone and you call me and I'm available, I would go. So it's involvement, but not not like when I was on the others.
The other things. But I do I find that when I work with different groups like that, I I get a lot of input on from people that I might not have seen or come thought of something the way they look at things.
Say that again, when you.
You know, when I've when I've worked with groups like, you know, when I work with Jean and and different organizations like that, you come across a lot of people that have they that bring up perspectives that you don't, that you maybe.
Yeah, sometimes that's good.
Oh, absolutely.
Sometimes there's things that are happening we don't know about. And all of these, I feel, all that I'm involved in is a pretty honest situation. So, yeah, I think it's a positive.
Yeah, definitely. And thank you so much for being willing to come forward and serve.
Thank you all, and thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now move on in the agenda. Next item up is three E, Verg Lorentz is seeking reappointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Welcome. Um, can you just tell us a little bit about your time on planning and zoning or your seeking reappointment?
Oh, I have a little thing I can read.
Absolutely.
To start with. Okay, so I was first appointed to Planning and Zoning Commission in nineteen seventy eight. Fred Moffett, a Republican town councilman, nominated me for the position. I was the chair of the commission for nearly all of that time until I resigned in nineteen ninety one, when my son was born. Ten years later, I asked the town council to appoint me to the commission once again, given that our son had informed me that he could put himself to bed. Those of us on the commission have learned that there are no Republican nor Democratic ways of doing land use, so we focus on what's best for the town of Killingley in the long run. Uh, that has meant that unlike wealthy bedroom communities, we prosper when there is a balance between residential, commercial, and industrial zones while maintaining our rural atmosphere. As for the four units per acre, I agree with all of you that that's um, too dense for that zone. However, having sat here now for this evening, I'm resigning from the commission. Um, I find this to be sort of a witch hunt. I think we've done our job. Uh, it's a hard job on occasion. There's a lot of conflicting. I can't come up with the word, but conflicting wants, some people want privacy. And I agree completely with four acres. I mean, four units on an acre is too dense. But other than that, I think that the questioning tonight has been something I've never experienced before. And I was initially appointed in nineteen seventy eight, so this is a first. And I don't think it's a good thing for the town of Killingley, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Sorry to see you go.
Moving on in the agenda, next item up is three F, Michael LeHugh is seeking reappointment to Board of REC.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I've served on the Board of Parks and Recreation for two terms now. And um, I feel that I have contributed, and I would like to continue in that vein for the next term.
Questions, comments from council?
It's it's definitely a an active commission, so it can be a lot of fun. Um, I think we have a really good Bucky's really come into his own. And take taking the department into a in a in a different little bit more expanding out. And I I know everybody's chomping at the bit to get into this building here and get out of the one that that they're in right now, but um.
It has served its purpose.
It it has served its purpose. It's been used and reused and reused and and so, yeah, we we're going to come into this one and keep on reusing our town buildings. But, yeah, I I thank you for your all the work that you've done over the years in whatever capacity for REC, because it is you can get tired doing REC.
You can, but it's uh, it is rewarding. And as you said, I mean, with Bucky at the helm at this point, um, we are expanding things that the town is doing and looking forward to doing more of that.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Mr. Grandowski.
What are you getting like when you're out and about? What's your experience with the public? How how are they, you know, do they know that you're on the board or how, you know, is that or they're not aware of that?
Well, I don't advertise it.
No, right, okay, that that, okay.
But but, yeah, I mean, there are people that, you know, in the general public that know that I'm on the board. And and generally speaking, the feedback is favorable, especially with some of the things that have been going on. I mean, we're we're doing a lot more for activities for, you know, our senior members of the community. And then, you know, things for, you know, the the general public and so forth. So I, you know, I've not heard any real negative feedback for people who have, you know, approached me about it.
That's good, you know what I mean? Because I'm looking at, I see Owen Bell, you know, everybody loves it. Out of towners love it.
Yeah.
So now we're we're looking at Cat Hollow. That seems to be the next spot where we're putting some effort in and and that's good. We got the the gardening people working on that, that they come forward. So it's it's a lot of positive that that I'm hearing about it, so it's 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 good.
Can you think of any ways that the town council could better support Parks and Rec?
I think that the, you know, the the support has been good. I mean, you know, Tammy attends every every meeting as the liaison to from the from the town from the from the council. You know, depending on the issue of discussion, Mary has attended meetings, so I I think the support from the town council is there.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Barclay?
Um, just for the people that are are listening or will watch this video, can you um, just elaborate more on your part in some of the programs that you're working on for the elderly community?
Yeah, so the the I'm not directly involved in that at this point, but, you know, the because unlike some people, I'm not retired. But um, but but, um, but, you know, there, you know, there are movie times. There are other types of gaming type of activities that take place. And I think what's going to happen is, you know, once the move of the community center is to this facility, I think we'll definitely be able to expand a lot of those capabilities as well.
Are you looking at possibly having like a dinner or a lunch like once a month for the seniors?
I think that they've they've it's the subject's been broached, but there's obviously been no decisions at this point.
Thank you.
But there's a there's a stewin', there's usually a stewin' story or a soup and story. And those are almost always sold out.
Sold out, yeah.
Every time that they have them. So there is quite a few, and they do they do the picnics.
Yep.
The picnics are always a sellout. So, but, yeah, it's it's there's I think there's like, I think there's, oh, I think there's like fifty to sixty seniors every Wednesday that come out for the.
Yes.
It's it's crazy just to come watch a movie and hang out, but it's it's a great, it's great for the socialization purposes.
It is. I mean, part of the problem is with some of the seniors, they live alone. They don't have a lot of interaction, and these activities give them the interaction and fellowship. And it's it's just a good positive thing.
Definitely. And there's definitely more than enough stuff for the children in town as well as families, so. It's it's a very, very balanced program. We've got and the parks, the parks are are, I mean, they're used. They're used a lot.
They are used a lot.
Any other questions, comments? Do you have anything further for us?
No, I'm just looking forward to a positive vote so I can continue my work on this board.
Okay. On behalf of the council, I just want to say thank you for the time you've served so far for this community, and we'll be voting on your reappointment next Tuesday.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move on in the agenda. Next item up is item three G. Marcel Lucier is seeking reappointment to the Permanent Building Commission. As a regular member, his term would run from December sixteenth, two thousand twenty four to December fifteenth, two thousand twenty eight. Um, he has attended ten out of fifteen meetings in two thousand twenty four and nine out of seventeen meetings in two thousand twenty three. Currently, the Permanent Building Commission has no vacancies. Currently, the Permanent Building Commission has no vacancies.
I'm here tonight because I'm going to continue being on the Permanent Building Committee. I look at Mary, and she's probably one of the fourth, the fifth town managers that worked with us on different projects over the years. I'm nervous, so I'm going to try and get everything off my chest. Being part of the Permanent Building Committee, different projects are given to us to review. So, we have to choose an architect or a project manager. We interview quite a few companies, which is difficult sometimes because we have to choose somebody that's going to be truthful and honest. And if they're not, then it falls back on our show as the Permanent Building Committee. I worked on the new high school. I was part of Permanent Building Committee. And I, I'm a retired bricklayer, 50 years. I worked on different projects at Massachusetts, Rhode Island, and Connecticut. And I was fortunate, I worked on 10 buildings at Yukon. And I worked in Millstone, 2 and 3. And in the 60s, they were just developing Eastern College. And I worked on the first building in Eastern College. It was just an open field, and I was very fortunate as a bricklayer to work there. I worked from Ridgemont to Bradley Field on different projects in Connecticut. And I don't know if you have any questions for me?
Open up for council members?
Let's see, what else am I going to talk about? I am a, I've been a Killingley resident for 60 years. And I was part of the David Fire Department for 50 years. I'm a retired, I was a retired captain in the David Fire Department. So, I've been around Killingley for all my life. And Killingley's always been in my second home. And before I finish, I want to wish everybody Happy New Year and the town council good luck on your coming, your coming budgets this year. What else have I got to say?
You're retired Navy.
I'm a retired, I'm a retired veteran. I served towards the end of the Korean War. My ship didn't go to Korea, but I did four Mediterranean cruises on a on a USS Albany heavy cruiser out of Norfolk, Virginia. So, I seen quite a bit of the world in my service time. What else have I got to say?
Grand marshal for the David Memorial Day Parade.
I've been, yeah, I've been, I've been involved with the Killingley Veterans Council, which a lot of people really don't realize, but Killingley Veterans Council is all about. I'm not going to go into, go into it tonight. But I've been, I ran the David Parade for almost 30 years. And now, I'm getting up in age, so it's a learn, we'll have to give it up. I try to attend as many meetings as I can, but sometimes you can't, you can't go to all of the meetings. And next week, I'm going to be 91, so I still get around. And I hope I still get around and continue being a member of this commission. What else have I got to say? I'm not nervous no more. I'm all done.
On behalf of the council, I want to say thank you for the time you've served on Permanent Building Commission. And also, thank you for the time you served our country.
He actually attends quite a few of the football games, too, with his heavy winter gear and everything. He stands out there and freezes watches the football team, so.
All right, and we will be voting on your reappointment next Tuesday. So, we'll move on in the agenda. Next item up is 3H. Stuart Rivers is seeking reappointment to the Permanent Building Commission. His term would run from December 16th, 2024 to December 15th, 2028. Mr. Rivers has attended 12 of 15 meetings in 2024 and 16 out of 17 meetings in 2023. Welcome. Can you just tell us a little bit about your time?
You have the honor this evening of interviewing the two senior members on the building committee. I thought very seriously of not reapplying this time. I'm 83 years old. We're working on this building presently, and I just thought I would like to spend that time and finish the project. I don't think I'll be reapplying, so get out there. And if I'm reappointed, find somebody younger for the next, for the next round.
Well, we're going to count on you to get a replacement. That's the, you know.
I don't have those young contacts anymore. Senior citizens, so. Any questions?
I'll just make comments. I'm on the liaison of the Permanent Building Committee with these two gentlemen. And their experience with everything that they've had is a great asset to the Permanent Building Committee. They really need them on there.
We have a good liaison, a good staff member with Mary Brom. Mary has been to our meetings. We're handling hundreds of millions of dollars of your money. You choose the projects, you give us the money, and we try to get the job done on the budget and get it done right. It's not always easy, but we do the best we can. I'm the only member, by the way, that's not a tradesperson, on the building committee.
However, you have a lot of experience in town, though.
Well, I spent eight years on a town council. This round on the building committee, it's been about 15, 20 years. And I was involved, delayed, part of the KISS School. And I did the library. I was on the building committee there.
So, you might not have a trade, but you understand the trades.
Try to use common sense and listen and ask a lot of questions.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, I want to thank you for your time that you've devoted to this community serving. And we'll be voting on your reappointment next Tuesday.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move on to item 4, citizen statements and petitions. Would anyone like to make public comment? Last call for public comment. Did we have anything submitted? Okay, thank you. Seeing that, we'll move on. Item 5, we have nothing old business. Item 6, we have no new business. We have nothing for executive session, so entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion was made by Mr. Grandowski, seconded by Ms. Barclay. Discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, this meeting is adjourned.